Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
...of town in Shasbury. I'd like to call this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order at 6:30 on June 6th, 2022. First order of business, is there any conflict of interest or anything showing on the agenda?
No.
No.
Okay. The next is, we have two sets of minutes to approve. The first one is on May 2nd. I'm here, Mike and Martha. No, and Tony wasn't here either. But we still have enough to approve this, okay? So moved by Mike.
Seconded.
Seconded by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Understood.
Okay, so it's a 3-0-2, okay? And the next one is May 16th. Mike was here, I was here, Mike was here, Martha, Tony, everybody was here, Joe was here, okay? Entertained a motion to accept them.
So moved.
So moved by Joe.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, next on the agenda. We have a check warrant for $393.09. This is for... What's it, Dave? This is the check warrant for...
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get Zoom back in. I just lost it. But $393 is for the first payment to Delta for the dental insurance for the DPW and the town clerk.
Okay.
So it has to be sent by check as the first payment.
Entertained a motion to accept it. Check warrant number 39309 for the Delta Dental.
So moved.
So moved by Tony.
Seconded.
Seconded by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0.
Recording in progress.
He unplugged us again, probably. I'm just joking.
Who was that? Whatever that was.
I've got, yeah, I've got a WASP.
There's no payroll warrant?
No.
No, there's no payroll.
Okay, so just this one. Next, I have a check warrant. Check warrant number 36 for $28,978.74. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Joe. Items over $1,000. Harrison Enterprises for $1,863. RCS Consulting for $1,009. Sycamore Landscaping, $3,315.
That has a lot of storm damage tree work on it. It's much higher than normal.
Vermont League of Cities and Towns must be for casualty insurance, $15,811.75.
Yeah.
It's a big one, okay? That's it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Announcements?
Can we address the one that was left off?
Oh, yes. In fact, I had it written down and looked over it, okay. The town clerk has been... It's a three-year process for getting certification as a town clerk. The first two years, we were able to get grants and that sort of stuff. This last and final one is costing $850. We're asking, we don't have a warrant written for it, but we're asking for your approval, and I'll sign the warrant when it is written up. $850 to the state?
No, the New England High School Clerk's Institute Academy.
Okay.
This is the third summer where she's gone, and this will get the final certification.
And she'll be totally certified by then. She's done a lot of work, so, for $850, so, do I have a motion?
I can make a motion to take $850 for the town clerk tree?
Unseconded.
By Mike, seconded by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. I'll sign that when you get that. Okay, now announcements. Anybody have any announcements or anything? Public comments? Is there anybody on Zoom? Boys are here for the ordinance, okay? Melanie, treasures report.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Can we see the cash flow? If you got it there, Dave?
I had it.
You had it.
My computer went down, I have to reload the whole thing.
Okay, well, I'll just talk. It's not a final one anyway, because the most recent payroll, Joan has not yet worked her magic, so I haven't, so I didn't want to project it to the budget, because it would not be complete. So I can tell you that basically, we are looking really, really good for the end of the fiscal year, the end of this month. We look like we've got plenty of cash in the bank to get through the first couple of months until the tax bills start being collected, especially if we are on track for the grant list, which I believe we are. Last I've heard, we're looking like we're in good shape. And, I'll just keep talking. If we were to look at...
Yeah, one count is coming up too soon, because it cut me completely out of the VTM network.
Okay. Okay, well, that's fine. If we were to see the reserve spreadsheet, all we would see is water collections. It was one of our two big months, and they came in briskly. They were due June 1st, so if you have, if you're hearing my voice and you forgot to pay, you are now going to be, it'll be a little bit of a penalty. But I think the payments came in pretty much the way they always do. Let's see, the only, any questions about any of that? The spreadsheets you can't see?
State programs still available?
Yes, I got two, two more people were cleared today, which is very, very good news. Anybody who's having any trouble paying their bills should be aware of this program that will allow any arrears that occurred during and because of the COVID. There is money available through the state to wipe out those arrears. So if you need any information, you can find it on our website or give me a call. About, I want to say maybe 10 people from Shasbury have been able to take advantage of this program. It's a very good one, and I really wish even more people would be taking advantage of it. I just saw the spreadsheet very briefly there.
Yeah, see? Do you want the cash flow or...
Let's see the cash flow first. I'll just confirm what I said. So those are pretty normal. Money came in. You can look at down at the bottom, see the money going out. That is the payroll that you haven't yet seen. So that amount is included in the cash flow, but we just haven't done the official entry yet. So you see our cash balance sitting there. We're in good shape to get through, certainly through the end of the fiscal and the next couple of months before taxes come in, we should be in good shape unless, Dave spends money that I don't know he's going to spend, but I think he's not.
No. He doesn't spend money in June.
Yeah.
He's against the rules.
So, yeah, if you want to look at the reserve fund really quickly, all you're going to see is the water. Yeah, there you go. That, the credits column, you see, that's all the water payments coming in, and nothing else has went on at all this month. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that I had a great conversation with two representatives from the VLCT on internal controls. It was the internal control audit that we, you guys approved, I think, a while ago. And the bottom line is that we're doing really well and doing almost everything we could be doing, especially with the very small staff we have. The one thing I came out of that conversation feeling that it's time for me to adopt positive pay for all of our checking. And I know that the school district do that, I know that they need to do it, there are people trying to defraud them all the time. Do people know what positive pay is?
No.
Positive pay is when you, is sort of, before a bank will allow one of your checks to be cashed, it has to match up with a list of checks that you, basically with your check register. And they, so if somebody gets a hold of your check stock and starts creating fraudulent checks, they will not be honored, unless, you know, it has to match what we assert we have, the checks we have written. There are a lot of, a lot of people getting very sophisticated with that kind of fraud. And so I'm going to reach out and say it's time for us to do that, too.
So positive pay is a security measure?
Yeah.
At what cost?
Oh, I think, the banks want you to do it, because it decreases their risk, too. I don't, I don't think there's a fee. If there is, it would be very nominal.
Does this...
I would certainly present it if there's a reason.
Does this hold up somebody's check clearing? Because does the bank now have to do a separate step to make sure that it is...
It shouldn't hold it up, because, because as long as we do our part before the checks go out, which is how they want it to be.
Okay.
But I will get the details on it, and I think it's time. My, I know that the treasurer for some of the school districts has, has positive pay dings practically every, every time checks go out, because there are just a lot of, a lot of hurdles out there.
Trying, trying to...
So, so anyway, I think it's time for us to do that. The other thing is that at the, at the turn of the fiscal year, I am supposed to do a report on our internal control. I've done that every other year. I will be doing that again, probably at the next meeting I'll present it. So that will be a more formal presentation about how we're handling all of, handling special cash in the office. But as I say, the VLCT seem to think that we're doing pretty much everything right.
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah.
We're very, very fortunate to have the crew that we have here.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we've just got, not enough of us, but we're really thinking about it all the time. Any questions about any of that?
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to make a little comment, is that the goal of this, of this committee is not to save money. We are, we are empowered by the people to do these services and spend the money. So, I mean, it's nice that there's money left over, but we've done all the services, we've done everything we should. I mean, we aren't here to save money and all that sort of stuff, because we're empowered by the people to do these services, and, and they pay us to do it. They pay in money to have it done, and we're just making sure this is done right.
Yeah, at the end of this year, we'll probably be within 1% or 2% of the budget.
Which is, which is what we should be.
As a planning tool, that's pretty close.
Yep, sure is.
With the caveat that there was that weird money in, money out.
Taking that out, yeah.
Yes. Oh, absolutely.
The money for parent acres, which is a huge influx and outflux, and if you don't take that out, it looks like we're...
Yeah. So, yeah, you can't just look at the, at just the budget, because it's going to be distorted.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much, yep. Okay, DPW report?
So we have just what's coming up, Ditching in Tumble Hill Road, above Holy Smoke intersection. The ditching's straight up through there, continuing on, they've done up most of Tumble Hill already. They're going to ditch all of Eric Road, and of course, seed and mulch, all the new ditches. Grading will be West Mountain Road, cider mill, Horton Hill, Daniels Roads, Daniels Road, because the weather does look pretty good for it. And then over on West Mountain Road, I feel like I know it probably isn't by Charlie Hall's house, on the south bank, it's kind of a steep ball walk. We actually had one of our cloud trucks go off the bank a couple of years ago. So we've been talking to him and some of the, what we did on Shasbury Hollow, we're just going to taper that out, so that it's not a fall, it'll be a slow decline off to the side. So we've been working with Charlie on that, and we're going to probably get that going next week. It'll work better for everybody in the long run. And Mr. Weaver is going to be starting the culvert project up at Spirit Hollow, which is at the very end of the Shasbury Hollow Road next week. That's a Better Roads grant. That's the enormous culvert they're making us put in up there to replace the old one. It's nearly three times the size, it's really enormous. But fortunately, we got a lot of money from the grant to do it, so, and that'll be wrapped up pretty quickly. Now, we'll be from somewhere like that. Unfortunately, there's no traffic at the end of the road, so it makes it a lot easier. And that is about it. We're working on the new grants we're getting. I don't have an update on the mower.
Yeah, I was just going, just going to ask you.
Yeah, the tractor is over there. The boom was, I thought, there, but it's still not attached, I guess, because it's not here. And hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, because it'd be nice to start the mowing. Some of it's getting pretty hot.
It's ready.
We're going to have to crank up, well, we don't even have anything to crank up anymore, so we'll get an update on that.
Okay.
Because I know, like, we all know that the main part is there, and the boom was supposed to be, so I'm not quite sure what the delay is here.
Before it gets out of control, is there any way we can contract somebody on a quick...
Not really, but push comes to shove, we can get something and knock back corners. There's a few corners that, if they go much further, we're going to have to do something. But we'll get an update on where this thing is.
Do you feel it's going to be a liability as far as people being able to see?
Yeah, you know, just as a safety precaution, if, if there's some reason this is delayed, then we'll have to come up with something, at least to deal with intersections.
There is no, the person that we could contract retired a couple of years ago, which is why we ended up buying a mower.
Yeah, yeah. Because we used to contract it with Dame Hosley out of Manchester.
I remember that.
Yeah, and he retired, and then we tried leasing one, and that worked good for a year until leasing went for the boom. And just, and this grant, the grant we got from the state to buy this is just so much cheaper, it'll save us so much money over life span. It's just unfortunately, that got held up with COVID, and now the tractor's coming, like I said, I'm not sure what the delay is for this boom.
We might be able to trade with another town or something like that for, just to do the corners and that type of thing.
Yeah, we could have hit on a couple of towns. I know a few that the mowers pretty much park, and just say, I'm going to use this for a few days. We've traded off, we do have a north bank and back and forth.
Yeah, okay.
And that's about it. We have some grants coming up, but we haven't quite decided what we're doing with them.
Okay. Any questions or comments? The Memorial Day Parade is on the program, and I'd like to kind of bring it up later because Mr.
Harwood.
Victor Harwood, who was in charge of it, gets through work at 7 o'clock, and he wants to be part when we're talking about it, okay? So if that's okay with everybody, we'll go on to the next one, Trails and Travel and Trail Ordinance. So we're closing LT 2 to motor vehicles. This is a, we need to understand the process that we have to go through to do this.
And that is, I'm putting it on screen, the board has this.
We already voted to, to start the process.
The one delay here, this, we will actually pass this with hopefully the speed ordinance and do the first reading at the next meeting. What happens here is when you pass an ordinance, and it's not so much this one, although we could get one, if someone, after the, times it's published, which is two meetings and a warning in the paper, once the board passes it finally after the 60 days, within 44 days, someone can file a petition that then requires the town to have a special town meeting within 60 days. So I don't think this is that controversial, the speed ordinance maybe. So what, I talked to Marlene, we contacted the Attorney General's Office. We're going to have time to pass both of these, the board to pass them, so that if a petition is filed, the 60 days would fall within the November election. And then at the regular select board meeting on that Monday night, that would be an informational meeting, and then the town meeting, we would just be able to print, this is just a yes or no ballot. We could just print that and put it in.
For midterm elections.
For the midterm elections. If we pass this now, we might wind up with having to have a special meeting and a special election. This has to be a vote. Whether or not someone will petition, I don't know, but if they do, it's best to have this lined up with, with an election, so.
Okay.
I'm timing it out, so it'll work that way. And then, so Marlene checked it through with the state, and it doesn't have to be mailed out with the absentee ballots, because it's a local issue, and we can just print them up here, and people would get it with their ballot at the election place. And then they would just be hand counted, because they couldn't go to the machine, so it's more of a precaution than anything else. But if there's any questions on the travel on trails ordinance, as proposed, this is just to close off LT 2, which runs between, not according to the law, Hickory Hill and Dexter Road. And this would close it for 700, 1,770 feet to 0.500 feet north from Hickory Hill on Highway 18. And part of that reason is if we close the entire thing to motorize traffic, that means they can't get to your driveway. So, but it will be signed there, that ends, it won't be wide, no, you don't turn around, just no threshold from here. And then it would be physically closed at your driveway. But I talked to the attorney, and if we close the whole legal trail, then your vehicles are coming in. So we'll just do it that way, and I think that'll, that'll solve the problem. Like, I think the whole board agrees, that I had no idea that many people actually drove down that narrative. It's not to our advantage to have people doing that either, so it'll turn into a nice little trail. And for anybody at home or watching this, this only applies to legal trail 2, which is from Dexter to Hickory Hill, connects the two parts of Town Highway 18, which has two different names at the terminus. So we will vote formally on this, if the timing's right, at the next select board meeting, maybe the one after that. I have to include the dates all lined up. And then we'll go for the motion, publishing it and taking it from there.
To public hearing, or to...
To, to select board meetings, we have to talk about, I have to have it published in the banner, of course, on the webpage and all that stuff. And ones except those who affect, as I say, after the second meeting, and then people have 44 days to file a petition proposal.
Okay, doing. This is just informational.
Yeah, I just wanted to know where it is. This is, like I said, this has already been vetted by the county, so this is ready to go. But I want to do this speed, so I don't want two of them hanging out here.
Yep, okay. Okay, we'll back up one for the Memorial Day Parade planning. Victor, thank you very much for what you did.
Yes.
I got a very nice comment from somebody that was at both parades, and this one went off a lot better than what Bennington did, and they're supposedly a bigger and better town, so.
Yeah.
We try harder.
Yes. My, the reason I asked, had this put on the agenda for today is that in the past, it's really been up to the Veterans Committee to do it, and all of a sudden, it's down to just one person, and I, I really believe that the town has an obligation to, to honor that day. And so I want to make sure that the town is, will work with you and behind you, you still can plan it, or, I mean, anything you want the town to do, I want the town, the town will be responsible for it in the future, is the best way I can say it. No way are we taking this away from the Veterans Committee or anything else, but Marlene is at your disposal and all that sort of stuff, because the town, I believe the town has an obligation to have a parade.
It just seemed to me, and I'm not, I'm not the Lone Ranger of the Veterans Committee, it's become difficult with the COVID.
We understand, and that's...
We have very few get-togethers. I'd like to get some more of the younger veterans, you know, more involved in it. But I guess I was just kind of surprised about the arrangement or lack of arrangement, you know, just to kind of formalize it, and...
Well, in the past, you've done, the committee has done such a good job that the town really didn't, wasn't necessary to be involved, and with just one person doing it, that's way, that's not right. So I don't know if I need to have a motion, or just by consensus that the town will be responsible in some way for the, for the thing.
It's really administrative, it's more just administrative.
We understand.
Victor, are there things that, for next year, you would need help with?
Well, next year, we won't...
Or we're not, yes, the next time, I guess, two years from now.
You know, it would be nice to have that administrative, you know, support. I guess I could run copies out of my computer or whatever, and mail them, and charge you guys, and, in the past, I've had to bite the bullet a few times for some dollars.
No, there's money in the budget for you.
And, you know, the flags on Main Street, I've been able to bum them off.
Yeah.
I just left Home Depot, and I apologize for being late today. But I did have a double shift because of staffing problems. And I, I keep having to remind him that I'm a part-time guy, and it's more of a hobby than anything else. But, yeah, there's that potential that Home Depot might turn that off.
That's all right, there's money in the budget.
It's rather expensive for those flags.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted just to be here, just to make that little pitch.
Absolutely. Okay, by consensus, we all agree, okay?
Yes, of course.
Any other comments or things? Again, Victor, thank you very much.
Thank you, it was a lovely parade, it was really nice. Beautiful day for it, too. Beautiful day for a parade.
We need more floats.
Yeah.
Yeah. We need the selectmen float.
Yeah.
Go Joe, go Joe.
I'm sure our own has a hay wagon for us somewhere.
Exactly.
Yeah. We'll deck it out with some lights.
Just to evolve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, the state has given us, or made available money, to look into a sewer feasibility study. Will you, have you sent it out to...
Yeah, the, the engineers...
Yeah, the engineers' proposals are due in the next week. Two weeks, sorry, two weeks. And so what we need to have is a selection committee, we just did this for sidewalks too. It's part of the process is the town has a committee that reviews proposals and ranks them and scores them for recommendations to DEC on which engineer we want to pick for the project.
Right.
So we just need a few people on it. I mean, I would be one of the members on it, the last one, Mike, was on it.
I don't mind doing it again, I did the sidewalk one, so I kind of have a better idea of what I.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Again, it's just.
Any other?
Martha?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, and you know what, that's all we need, three of us.
Okay, three of us to do.
And when I get them all, and I did require that they all be submitted digitally, so I will send you all of them.
Okay.
And then we can just set up on maybe prior to a select board meeting.
To just go through them, okay.
And each of the bidders know how much money we've got. In other words, the state grants, so.
The state grants us much, so I'm not expecting a why.
Very many people.
And we don't have to, don't have to go with this?
No, no, a little bit.
You don't, but you want to be reasonable with.
Yeah, and we have, I know we will have two bids, because I've been contacted by engineers up north and hopefully, and by two others who may or may not.
Okay.
So we'll see what happens.
Okay, so we've got three people on the committee.
Yeah, it's been out for a while and I've only answered a small cluster of questions from one of the engineers, because we post our answers on the webpage too, so that every bidder can go to the webpage on the bids and see what other engineers have asked questions about and what the answers were. So at this stage, I'm not expecting any of from anybody else, this is out for a few weeks now.
Okay.
So Mike, Martha, I'm perfect.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Coal Hall Architecture. Okay, we all agree something's got to be done here at Coal Hall, man, or an elevator or something like that. We talked about putting it out there. They've actually found in some record, or found a couple of years ago, an architect sent us a proposal for putting a small addition out towards our boundary out there, give you a couple more meeting rooms and that sort, or office rooms and that sort of stuff. And within that, inside the building would be the elevator. All that would come off, the window, the window that belongs where the door is would be put back in there. So it would be back to the original thing and that sort of stuff. It certainly looks a lot different. What we want to do is we want to spend some ARPA money to have an architect tell us just how much it's going to cost, because then we can go, because this is on how we spend some of this ARPA money. So we want to take a very small section of this ARPA money, which we have to approve as a select board, to spend it just for RFP, for architectural design, I guess.
So what we'll do is we'll put out an RFP looking for a statement of qualifications for an architect to take the original Keith and Westerner, they did this in 2009, and it really is a very, very nice looking addition to the building. I took it and I cut it in half, the original one was to extend out the entire width of the buildings to both floors. We don't need that, we need one half. That'll suit because actually that window through my office will be where the new part is. You'll have a lift, the entrance of the building will be in the back, you'll walk into that level, there'll be a few steps down to the lower level, the lift will go down that amount and then we'll be able to come up to the second floor also, so it'll be completely handicapped accessible. This would become part of the meeting room. In the original plan, there's an office on the other side of the elevator, I'll just move over there. Downstairs, there's a little office there that would be converted to the clerk assessor's office, the big benefit of this plan, because it's really quite innovative. The entire space we have now turns into the clerk's office, which allows a bigger room for people to, you know, do research, it gives us expansion space in the vault at some point, it gives us, like this building, we have access to storage. The whole doorway area, that staircase would be removed. And then on the lower level, there'd be all storage in that area then, it would be really nice. That lift thing over there would be gone, more storage. The occupancy available, this one is currently fifty-three, I believe, would go up to even more, because we'll have all the floor space over there that can be used. It would really.
And the fire exit is the front door.
This still has to be fixed, but it will not be an entrance to the building, it's a fire exit. But we do have to do some modifications to the front, which is all part of changing the Reverend's Park out there. The whole landscaping of that is all dependent on the overall structure. But as it stands now, this plan is nice, much nicer than what we've been thinking about a couple of years ago. I think Keith and Westerner is more into keeping with the traditional architecture of the building. This looks like an addition on an old, old building. Completely restores this side of the building, so that visually you're just seeing the old church on both sides now. And you won't even really see the entrance if you get over here and then come in. It does provide lots more space downstairs. And by cutting it in half, and this is why I need an RFP, because it is something that has to be put up with ARPA, but it's impossible to do without updating these figures. Because I can take the figures, find, reduce the square footage, come up with a ballpark number, but you really need a professional to go through this and come up with what it should be.
So what kind of ballpark are we talking for, just the, having an architect come in and look at the design again and re?
It could be, not going to construction plans, it could be ten to twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
You know, and then it could be looked at. It's kind of like how we look at the sewers, except there's no money from the state to do this. Because there's similar things, just get a number, because we need a number to even think about that. This is the same thing, you need a number, but no one will do this.
So then you would apply for grants to pay?
Well, yeah, once we got that, once we can get approval for the base amount.
Yeah.
There is the accessibility grant, that's seventy-five thousand.
Right.
Come off the top. If you have a plan.
Plan.
And you submit for seventy-five thousand to the state, they're not going to cut it down, because you have a whole plan. And then there's a number of things we can get to fund the outside. Because turning this into the park in the front, to expand the Reverend's Park, finish up around here, I can go to my grant plan for all that here, but.
I didn't say, what are you cutting in half, the original?
The original was designed, it was simply too much office space, which is why I think it was turned that down. And I guess in 2009, it was pretty expensive too. Original plan was end to end of the building.
Right.
Pushed out with a lot more office space. We don't need any more office space. I mean, it'll be nice to expand the area for the clerk, because it's even crowded in there. You know, it's not a lot of square footage downstairs, but that would give the clerk a lot more room. The assessor would have, there would be a little area to work in over here. And again, the big part is getting rid of this staircase, getting rid of that lift, provides storage and expansion space critically for the vault, because at some point, the vault's got to get bigger. Well, with this plan, now we would have more room for the vault. And there's grants for that too. And once we get the base plan down, there's a lot of matching you can start doing. Everything from AARP has a exercise facility for senior citizens that you can incorporate into here, because it's accessible from the village. You know, it's just things you can really start looking at. Because it's in the designated village center too, there's money to do that stuff too, so.
We'll probably end up, we haven't used ARPA money also.
Oh, absolutely. There's no way to do this, either bond or use ARPA money.
Yes, so that.
Because no matter what, you've got to be realistic, we're talking several hundred thousand dollars. But, you know, out of the million twenty-five, you know, it's, you know, it's transformational things to do with the money too. And I think we're never leaving here, we have to fix this building forever, so this is a big thing to make it a workable, modern, old building, that would have everything we need to do in it.
The only comment I've heard from people around town about the ARPA money is they'd like to see Coal Hall kind of wrapped up. I mean, this just happened out here, so that's a big, that's the only comment I've had.
They'd like to see Coal Hall.
Coal Hall, you know, get some of the ARPA money to.
Oh, absolutely.
Project move along.
I think.
We're doing the small things like this, the roof was repaired, I have a couple painters coming, the windows are a whole nother issue with this building, but yeah, I mean, with the whole thing planned out, this building, what we do with this building determines everything outside. This parking area now can hold like fifty cars, which we probably don't need, but I want to take the Reverend's Park, and Vic and I have talked about this, and move it, expand it out and move the monument to that side and frame it in, so that when you come in, you can see the monument. And it would be a walking space to get to it and bench you, so you could sit there, a new flagpole, a new tree for the. That was a little shabby out there. Also, I'd like to bury these power wires, that for some unexplainable reason, they've gone straight across the parking lot here, too close to the building. Because the roof has had a time to finally get the lift up there. Plus, it was so close.
Did the surveyor cover it as well?
I have a surveyor contracted, you know, it's like everything else now.
Yeah, it's slugging.
You know, it's going to take a while for me to get everything.
I just didn't know if they did it before the pad got pulled out or?
No, but we talk with him all the time, you know, he's fine, I've been talking back here, we are going to have to put in a stockade fence back here. We came to about twenty-four feet, a six-foot fence, it's a temporary thing until we come up with a design, because we did take, by accident, things down that, well, please, took things down that probably they should have left. So that's just making that work again. And then the final over here, like, this should grow in, believe it or not, there's grassy out there, but.
Really?
When this grows in, it'll be good for a while. I mean, because by the time, the way things are, by the time we go through just the design phase, we're into next year, then you're going to have to find contact, which might take another year. So this will be a hayfield by the time we actually have to start changing it again, so. But the whole, the key is the building, and then the landscape architecture around it kind of falls into place. Because I would like to start some of these other things, but you can't, because we do have to fix the front. And if, well, to me, there's only one viable option, is attach something to this building that has a real elevator in it. So I also have an engineer who's telling me that municipal buildings don't have an exemption to use these kind of, they have to have an elevator.
Right.
So, you know, you're going to have to get a two-faced elevator, so that when you walk in, you can enter this side of the elevator to go down these two feet to the floor level downstairs, and then it can also come up to this level. So, I mean, it's doable, many, there's many, many two-door elevators everywhere, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's just something we need to move forward, so we have a realistic number at the end of the day.
So do you have a number or should, or should, should we have a motion for an exact number or just have an agreement that we spend some ARPA money?
Yeah, you have an agreement that, well, what we can do, because we're not spending any money yet, just the board approves, I put out an RFA, RFP for Architectural Services for Design for Coal Hall.
And ARPA money would be used to pay for it?
Well, that you don't have to pay for, because that's the proposals.
Okay.
The proposals would be what.
Afterwards.
Yeah, what they want for it, so then we'll take it up then.
All right. So do we have a motion to do an RFP for structural work on Coal Hall?
Yes, so moved?
Moved by Mike.
Second.
Talking by Tony. Any discussion? All in agreement? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, five zero zero. Okay, speed ordinance. Again, this is just, we're just starting to put together a list and, you have it there? Everybody should have received one too.
Yeah, I sent this around, I used a map to try and make this easier for everybody to see. So I'll take a little walk around town with everybody, see what we're talking about.
Yeah.
So starting up by Shakespeare Hollow, nothing's really changing up here. What really changes as we move through town, the first ordinance listed twenty-five mile an hour roads and then everything else was thirty-five. Well, they listed so few roads, that as you go around town, you find that everything like Avondale Meadows, Eleanor's Way that's up here in this quadrant, Blueberry Hill, they're all thirty-fives. And those are the ones I think should go down to twenty-five, these are dead-end roads. They really shouldn't be this. For most of the east side, east of Seven, the speed limits will stay what they are, with the exception of Twitchell Hill, which is a posted thirty mile an hour road, which isn't even in the ordinance. And I think that should go to twenty-five, because a downhill residential street shouldn't be.
With no sidewalk.
With no sidewalk, should not be thirty-five miles an hour. And Daniel Road would also change to twenty-five, because it, A, it's windy, it is heavily traffic, a lot of people use it, and it just, it's not appropriate for thirty-five. The rest of the roads out here, Hewitt and Harvest are already twenty-five. We do have some interesting things up here on Cross Hill, it's not posted at all, and I think that should remain thirty-five. On here for Myers Road, between Bennett Hill and Tinkum, it's posted thirty-five eastbound and thirty westbound, so I don't know.
Yes.
How this actually happens.
Somebody, somebody stopped me, yeah. So it's thirty-five one way and twenty-five on the other side.
You want a tailwind going one way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, I started, that's why I drove around town with a giant map, because I came across this, it was like, I gotta check every road now and see.
Yeah.
Right.
What they are. So I drove around every road, and that one is followed by down here, Gordon Hill is also posted twenty-five eastbound and thirty-five westbound, so these would all go to thirty-five. These should be thirty-five mile an hour roads, as far as I can see. Going, the extension for Cold Spring here needs to stay at twenty-five with a warning coming off White Creek, a reduction of fifteen, I think, I'll check the engineering standards, but you're coming off White Creek, as I'm sure you're all familiar with.
Yeah, that corner is.
You go up that funnel.
Yeah.
And people should definitely be slowed down there. I don't like splitting speed limits on roads, so that section should just be twenty-five until you hit Alder, and then it can become thirty-five again. And then over here, let's see, McCarthy Acres is another one that's thirty-five, it's like, you know, two hundred yards long, I don't know why it has to be thirty-five though, so. All downtown is twenty-five, so nothing changed there. Then we go to Buck Hill, and Buck Hill is twenty-five from Seven Eight to Howard Park, and then it would just be thirty-five over to East Road, which is what it is now. Airport Road stays the same, that's thirty-five. Bayhand would be reduced to twenty-five. North Road, I think should be reduced to twenty-five, it's currently thirty-five. Don't need it mostly, trucks are on it, and it doesn't need to be thirty-five. Now we go up to where this discussion actually kind of started, up by Old Depot now. Let me see if I can bring this up here. You can see a lot of little roads, like Island Woods and that are reduced to twenty-five. You know, Timber Trail, they should not be thirty-five mile an hour road. So Old Depot, Jack Cross, Sugar House, would just turn into twenty-five mile an hour roads. And we have petitions from the residents of that area that would like that to be twenty-five mile an hour. On Cider, not sorry, not Cider Mill, Maple Hill.
Maple Hill.
Would be twenty-five, from Old Depot to the intersection with East Road, and then it would be thirty-five from the intersection with East Road to the Arlington border. And East Road would stay thirty-five the whole way. But when you look at Maple Hill, yeah, Maple Hill, you do have, where those houses were at the beginning coming off Old Depot, it goes into a sharp bend. You have a limited stretch where it's kind of wide open, but you're having people accelerate into a sharp bend, where it's the only part of that road I know where there's been accidents, because when you're coming up this way, the people are coming down, and Cider Mill's right there, people are turning before the people are coming around the corner, so. I would leave that twenty-five miles. So again, I'm not a fan of having roads split up into speed limits, different speed limits, because it's confusing to everyone. Obviously, Potter Montgomery would go to twenty-five, I believe that's thirty-five. And then Cider Mill, I just left thirty-five, because it's a very long road, most of it is perfectly fine, and I just don't see a way of breaking that. fine, and I just don't see a way of breaking that up. We can put some cautionary signs around some of the areas that it gets a little sharp, but I wouldn't change that, that whole road. And Owen Harrison Road obviously goes down to 25, because that's another short road that's just, with the stop sign at each end, so we don't think we need to be going that fast, and that can be a little narrow. And that is, Fernis Cliff also turns to 25, all the little ones. Like I said, they visually, the visual, the last revision of this just mentioned a few 25, mostly in the village here, so every other road is like 35, but it's confusing. And then these ones that are marked 30, it's like, that's not even in the ordinance, except for Myers Road, any section of Myers Road, which just doesn't make any, any, any sense.
And, and Hidden Valley went down to 25 as well?
Hidden Valley's, the, the whole development's been 25.
25 all the way?
Yeah, all the way.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because that's too fast.
Yeah, some of the...
Yeah, it's surprising to see that. Where you have a residential development, and they left it 35, because you drive right into houses, it's, you know, there's a lot of bends there, people walking all the time. So, yeah, essentially, most of the 35 remain east of 7A, west, I'm sorry, of 7A, and, you know, the long ones, Cider Mill and East Road, on the east side of town, remain the 35. And we'll make a, print a list out, which will be part of the ordinance, so that people can, can go through this. I was writing the list, and then I decided to just check, and then I spent about a part of a day driving around town with maps, finding out where all these signs were.
I believe it.
First road that had different speeds in different directions, I was like, we may have a problem. We have some police looking at it.
Your proposal is to make a list of, or the ordinance will say the roads that are 20, that it'll state the roads that are 35?
State the roads that are 35, because there's far fewer of them.
And everything else that is not stated is automatically 25?
Automatically 25.
Everybody agree, understand that?
There'll be two speeds in town, 35 and 25. And then, you know, after, after we go through the process here, this brings up, you know, the 44 days someone has to write a petition, if they don't like it, then you can go to townwide vote. But I do think it's, it's better to list the 35s, because, first off, it's a lot shorter list, and then everything else is 25. And, because I can't see a need anywhere in town to have a higher, different speed, two speeds is all we need in town. It just gets confusing otherwise, I think.
Is it true Buck Hill is 50? Or, or no?
No.
People go 50 on Buck Hill.
I, I thought, somebody told me it was...
It's like 25.
25 and 35.
25 and 35.
Yeah, 25 and 35.
Depending on what direction you're going in.
Somebody added them up, didn't they?
Fortunately, Buck Hill is, is 25 both directions, all the way up to the park, and then 35 after that, and there's no need to change, yes, there's no need to change that, but it is good to have that, because there's always kids and people walking to the park along that road.
Yeah, well, that's the same.
I think this is just a cleaner way of doing it, and it updates this from the 70s, when this was last looked at, so.
However, you keep improving the roads.
Yes, as we have a very efficient highway department...
Yeah.
Roads are much smoother...
Yeah, and so it's...
...for your speed.
Yeah.
And that's a difficult thing to deal with.
Yeah.
Because you want to ride on a decent road, and then the speed's just...
That's right.
I mean, good roads just save money all, all around.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Look at your suspension, you know, what kind of money that costs to have your car fixed.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, the first few years of, I was, I was putting ball joints in my Suburban, you know, and now I have to go looking for a pop hole.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it is, it is, and there's no solution to that.
No, no, that's the problem.
People going faster. We have a lot of people cutting through from White Creek, different roads, to get up to 7A, to go up to Macmullan, or wherever they're going up there, it's, you know, it's the way, the way it is.
We were at a little, a little ceremony for the wireless, for the internet, the CUD ceremony, and just on the Colter Road there was...
It was amazing how much traffic there was.
What's the one between, you know, right past your house, not, is it Col, it's Colter?
Colter, that's right.
It's Colter, yeah.
There was just an amazing lot of truck traffic in the half hour we were standing there.
Yeah, probably 78 trucks.
Oh, yeah. That's a main thoroughfare to Shasberry Hollow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because Eric Road has more traffic than you might guess, if you just looked at it.
Yeah, the roads following in, you know, the real collective roads can pile up at certain times of the day. It is kind of surprising, being someone, as I head down here, you know, I'm usually in the office before 7, and I see some of these commuters, you know, it's like, wow, I guess you would do a few minutes.
Yeah. Okay, okay, so this is just a discussion, no motion or anything at this time?
And you all have this map?
Yep.
If, is there anything you're looking at here, don't disregard the red and the yellow, this is actually the, the range map, but adaptable to this, so I used it. So, look at, anything on there, and if, you see something you'd like to change, but I do think it's better to just have 35 and 25, and it's a cleaner way of doing it, especially getting rid of the east and west speed limits.
Okay. Other business? Yeah?
Yes.
We're going to get that...
The resolution, so I wrote a resolution for the town of Shasberry, and thanks and appreciation to Dr. David King for his work at Shasberry Medical for 36 years. He's been a doctor here in our, our town since 1986, and was hoping to, yeah, have us...
Go ahead and read it.
Read it, yes, sure. So, the Town of Shasberry Resolution of Thanks and Appreciation to Dr. David King. Whereas throughout his career, Dr. David King has worked tirelessly to promote the health and well-being of Shasberry residents through his affiliation with Southern Vermont Medical Center since 1986, and whereas Dr. King has served with distinction as the medical director at Shasberry Medical Associates for 36 years, and whereas Dr. King has been a strong advocate of patient-centered care, including the practice being designated as a 2021 NCQA Patient Center Medical Home, and the leadership of Bennington Free Clinic, and whereas Dr. King's sense of humor, kindness, energy, and graciousness has enriched those fortunate enough to have been his patients and work with him, now therefore be it resolved by the Shasberry Select Board, that the Town of Shasberry recognizes Dr. David King's achievements and his contributions to family medicine, and specifically to the Shasberry community, and expresses its appreciation and gratitude for those contributions, and wishes him well in his retirement, and be it further resolved that the clerk of the board be directed to send a copy of this resolution to Dr. David King.
Okay.
Okay.
How about a motion?
So moved.
Mike, thank you. Joe, any further discussion?
Perfect.
So, you know him personally, he's a very nice guy?
He is, he's a lovely person.
Good musician.
Different, different Dr. King.
Oh, it is?
Yes, there are three Dr. Kings in the Bennington area.
One of the players, I think, is the king of all kings. I think this Dr. King actually did play bass in Abandonance.
In very young years, yes, for things. So, I will have to send this to you, David, and that way, like an electronic, because I actually see a typo on my typing.
And, you get letterhead on this?
I'm assuming, I was just thinking, because it's just a Word document at the moment, that, that then you could just put it, yeah, on something, and then we could all sign it, and I can put it in a frame and bring it to you.
Do you want the whole board to sign it, or just...
I think the whole board should sign it, I think it's symbolically a nice gesture, so we can just do it the next meeting, because it will be before the end of...
The next meeting will be before the month.
Yeah, before the end of the month.
Okay, I, I agree.
Perfect, okay.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll handle that next month, or next meeting. We do have to go into executive session, but before that, I want to make sure everybody's, there is no other business or anything else, because when we come out of executive session, we're just going to adjourn the meeting, okay?
I just want to report that the ARPA committee has met. We are scheduled to meet again at the end of this week.
Thursday at 6:00 p.m.
Yeah, and we're talking about a postcard and a online survey...
Okay.
...to reach out to people.
This is how to spend all our money.
Well, at least, hopefully.
Yeah, some of it.
Hopefully.
We should have an espresso bar in the Cole Hall for our citizens.
Yeah, well, we're talking about also, you know, pairing it with other kinds of grant money, so we're going to reach out to nonprofits as well in the area, so, yeah.
Squeeze Apple Theater in there.
Yeah, I keep talking about...
That's where we did our meetings.
I know, I know.
Thank you, Tony, for that.
Okay.
Any other business?
No.
Okay, okay, so entertaining motion to go into executive session for personnel issues?
So moved.
Moved by Mike. Seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. We'll just go into the side room there, so.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.